We'll call to order this special meeting of the Town Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Economic Development Commission at seven o'clock. Before we begin, we just wanted to do a quick round around the table or we can say their name and what group they're from for at least for the record. So I'll start with Mary Lee.
Mary Lee, you'd be planning the zoning commission.
Erin Stevens, planning and zoning commission.
David Corcoran, director of Planning and Zoning.
Joe Mateus, planning and zoning.
Adam Grossman, economic development.
Luba, Town Council.
Pauline Nieduchek, Town Council.
Steve Jones, Town Council.
Cindy Cohen, Town Council.
Katie Murray, Town Council.
And then on Zoom, we have Amy Powell, Chair of PCC, we have Lisa Hancock, and we have Ryan and Candice, the alternate for planning and zoning commission as well.
It looks like Rita's on there too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, hi. I'm from the Rita Sangary from the EDC.
Great. All right. Thank you, everyone. So with that, Lisa or David, you want to kind of kick us off with the summary of the discussion?
Well, I'll start and then I'll let David take over. How's that? Good evening, everybody. I included in your packet this evening a copy of the recent regulations that the Planning and Zoning Commission passed regarding affordable housing and development with new developers. I included a little summary. I'm not going to go through the whole thing with you, but it is in here. And I know we wanted to get a group together to discuss it when I brought the subject of putting a trust fund in place for the portion that a developer would possibly contribute to if they decided not to do affordable housing, which is part of that regulation. There were some concerns on the Town Council part, and I think everyone just wanted to get together to discuss it. And so that's why we're here this evening. So David, if you would like to get into a little more of the details, please do so.
Absolutely. Thanks. So as I think you all know, back in last year, Planning and Zoning engaged a consultant to rewrite considerable portions of the zoning code, but among other items they took a look at were the affordable housing requirements and looking to implement the plan of conservation and development through their efforts to rewrite the zoning code. One of the items that was in the POCD back at the time was a goal to require 5% of units and any development of five or more units to be affordable per 8-30G. And so what was presented by Planning and Zoning Commission by our consultant, who was Dr. Ben Pollen, was a proposal that would require that a minimum of 5% of affordable housing be developed for any new housing developments with 85 units. Additionally, within that, he included an opt-out, which allowed for developers to pay the town $50,000 for any non-market rate housing in excess of 95% of the housing developments. So if you don't meet that affordable, you would then pay $50,000 per unit to get to the point that you would be affordable. So Planning and Zoning passed this back on October 25th of 2021. That $50,000 portion is contingent of the creation of Town Council creating an affordable housing trust fund, which would provide somewhere with that money and then set up an administrative vehicle to figure out how to spend those monies. So as you all know, back in December, we came to Town Council with that idea. There were some concerns raised regarding, you know, how much money that is relative to the number of units and maybe some other discussions, which I'm sure you all will discuss later. But I guess the moral of the story is we went and we kind of looked back at this and took a step back to see what things might be reasonable. There's really a few different approaches that you all could take. You could kind of leave things as is, it's obviously one option. We could remove the ability to pay a fee entirely and just require the 5% affordable housing to be constructed. And that could happen either through Town Council and PCC doing nothing or through a more active approach. We could look at rewriting the rigs entirely to remove any mandates or anything like that and try to take a density bonus based approach or something that's more incentive based. We could restructure how the fees work to either be based on like a percentage of total housing, of total construction cost or something to that effect, based on some sort of sliding scale. So it wouldn't be a flat like $50,000 per unit. I think there had been some concerns raised that, you know, if somebody comes in with six units, is that really fair to that developer if they have to pay $50,000 for one additional unit just to make it affordable? Or we could do some sort of combination of the above. So, you know, I guess I would take it back to you all to discuss and then tell us what you're interested in seeing. We did include from Tiki, a document that describes what some other towns in the area are doing or in the state are doing. And then we do have, I brought Mike D'Amato along. He is working with us in the assistant planner capacity, but also works, he's one of the founders of Tiki and works throughout the state and has a pretty good knowledge of all things 830G. So it's probably going to be a valuable resource to have in this meeting as you all discuss possible approaches. So I guess with that, I take it back to you all for discussion.
Actually, David, if I can interject just for a second?
Sure thing, Dave. Go ahead.
I think, you know, the idea in looking at affordable housing, you know, that's something that we've been working on for some time. And if we recall back, we'd actually placed a 20% affordable housing requirement on the TVA section. And, you know, it comes down to a great idea, but nothing happened. And in using one of Joe's models is that if you're doing something and it doesn't do what you want it to do, then you're not doing the right thing. And I think that's why when we started talking to Dr. Pollen, the idea, the opt-out became interesting because maybe in a certain situation, a developer can come forward and depending upon the economics or whatever, they may decide, I don't want to do this. But then there's still that fee-based system or that usage-based system that we looked at. And I think we wanted to do good, but we didn't do it well. And when we started talking to certain folks in terms of development, I think David's point about a six-unit multifamily and now you got to pay $50,000, that could bury that opportunity. So, you know, we started to look at this and thought, it's the right thing, but then how do we set it up the right way? You know, affordability is something that everybody's concerned about. Diversification of housing stock is something that we absolutely need to have in Pollen. But once again, the economics, if it doesn't work, no one's going to build. So we have to look at this from an attractiveness standpoint. We have to look at this as a way of being able to have options for folks. And in those scenarios, if we're able to build a trust fund that we can then do our own work, this works out in a number of different ways. So we wanted to work in conjunction with you folks and also with the economic development team because they also know what's going on out there. But we know we want to do the right thing. We just got to figure out how to do it. So we tried 20%. It didn't work. We go 5%. We're not sure if that's going to work. We go $50,000. So we've got a stake in the ground. Now let's figure out how we're going to make a 10 out of it.
Thank you, Andy. And as a quick note, Keith is also interesting. With that, if there's anyone who has a question, wants to take the initial comments. Like, Councilor Luba?
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. If you'd like to make some opening remarks first. Well, in looking at everything, I think that the bottom line here is that I think that we're all in agreement that we are looking for some type of inducement for affordable housing in the area, for workforce housing, however you want to term it. The problem that I have here is that we're, with the way that it's set up right now, is that it's more of the stick rather than the inducement, that we're looking at penalizing people for not doing enough affordable housing rather than inducing them to do that. And looking at the document that's presented before us, as set forth on page six, I think that the, what is example number four, to remove the requirements and rewrite the regulations for density bonuses, I think that's something that actually has some merit to it, where if we look to provide inducements, where say if somebody is willing to do this, then we look at a possibility of tax abatements for a year or two years, rather than a penalty of paying $50,000 per unit if they fail to meet that 5%. This way, it encourages people to come here, provides them the incentive to do the affordable housing. But at the same time, if they don't, then they have to face that additional tax burden, which then down the road, we could possibly examine adding in something else such as the Affordable Housing Commission or something along those lines. I think that I'm always wary of the town owning and running buildings. And I think that although that, if I understand it the way that the housing trusts is, that we'll have funding available there if we still choose to, that we could either use that to build our own affordable housing, and correct me if I'm wrong at any point, if I'm misunderstanding this, but if that's what it's built for, is for us to potentially build our own affordable housing at some point, based on that trust fund, you know, it's just something where I don't think that the town should be in the business of building and running affordable housing. I think that that's something that is best done by the private sector, if we provide incentives, then that's the way to do it. I know that there are certain housing that we do currently run and that we're involved in, but I think that that's something we're going above and beyond and what we're looking for, for affordable housing, workforce housing, something that I'm just very reluctant to get involved in. I think that, I'm sorry, I had some notes down here and I'll try and be quick about it, but let's see, that with regard to this, that I think one of the things that also is a little, in the example that we're providing, that we're looking at, we use Mansfield as one of the examples, where Mansfield is $3,600 for two units as opposed to $100,000, where if we, you know, if somebody doesn't meet their requirements, the penalty in Mansfield is $3,600. For us, it's $50,000 for each infraction on it. So I think that's a huge difference where you're talking $100,000 if somebody does, doesn't meet the requirements and has two units that they have to then pay for. I think that also, when we're looking at the other issues, that some of the other examples that are provided, Greenwich, Fairfield, and Stamford, I'm sorry, Pollen isn't any of those three towns, that they have a much different tax base, they have a much different business base, they have a much different population base there. And while I'd like to see Pollen get there at some point, we're not there. And I think that to use those as examples and say, this is how these towns do it, that's great, but we aren't there. And that if we're looking to attract businesses, I again, think that especially given the fact that when you look at our permitting fees and other fees that we charge as far as for hookups to utilities and other things like that, that you're looking at example of for some of the businesses that are looking at coming to town, eight to 10 to $12,000 permitting fees, when in other local municipalities, you're talking less than $1,000. So when you look at all these different fee structures that are coming up, then put that on top of this plan that we have right now of penalizing them at $50,000 or making them pay $50,000 to go less than that 5%. I just don't see it as inducing businesses to come here, providing them the incentive. I think if we provide them the tax abatement ability, I think that's something that I could definitely get behind. But at this point, I would really ask that we examine that option number four as a viable alternative for what we currently have on the books. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. I think option number four is on page six, for any referencing. And maybe Dave or Andy, if you want to clarify, for the policy, I think the $50,000, either we could use that to acquire homes, that they can be deep restricted, or maybe if you want to clarify, or the other option is if someone did come in and was planning to build affordable housing, that they would then get the funds to offset their costs for building those units? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, so there's a couple of other possible options that, yeah, could be used. One is to create a fund where we buy down the deeds of folks who willingly come forward to us to make their homes or apartment units affordable in perpetuity. So we would give them some of money that we mutually agree on, and in exchange, they would modify their deed to either restrict the sale price or the rental price, if it's a rental property, to something that meets the 830G definition of affordable. Another option that we could do, as you noted, is we could potentially, you know, work with future developers. If somebody came in and they wanted to do 20% affordable, we could, you know, potentially provide a subsidy to them to help make that happen. That would be another valid use of that fund.
And that would be similar to sort of the tax abatement, or it could be seen as an activator in some way or fashion.
Right. Yeah, we're not really looking at this as a negative. We're looking at this as a way of augmenting a hole in our housing stock that has been there for a long time. And we've tried different aspects. And, you know, we admit that this idea is not perfect. And we felt that, you know, in this process, we could probably work it out as a better option. So we decided to put a stake in the ground and in our regulations and then knowing that we're going to have to have the conversation with you folks, you know, and in other parts of the, parts of the town government, and that we would then straighten it out at this point in time. So, you know, we see it as, you know, in a perfect world, there would be an economic reason, there'd be a way of doing this, and it would have been built. But clearly, it hasn't come to Pollen yet. And, you know, in particular, what we didn't think about was the smaller developer. We were thinking 100, 200-unit developers. We weren't thinking of, you know, six-unit, you know, 10-unit developers. So clearly, that dollar amount of 50,000 in that scale becomes unbearable. But, you know, and that's why we're having this conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Andy. And as a quick clarification, I mean, if you don't know, maybe David does. If by July 1st, we don't establish that the 5% goes into effect, we can't go back in and then create a housing trust after July 1st? Or would you have that option to develop a trust after the fact?
Yeah, yeah. So what happens on July 1st is we will have, if nothing else changes, or we don't make any further regulation modifications, is on July 1st, it will become mandatory for any developer that comes in with at least five units to provide at least 5% affordable. That will be sort of the baseline. At any time, Town Council can create the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which would provide a way around that with the fee in lieu. And that can happen anytime before or after we pass the, or anytime before we're at the July 1st. Okay. And then just speaking in our, actually, not good.
Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about 830G. So this, can you give us a quick overview of 830G and why, like how that sort of drove us to this consideration, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So in a nutshell, and Mike may want to chime in with more detail on this, there is an interest from the state level in seeing communities go up to having at least 10% affordable housing. And what affordable housing means is that rent or sale price is restricted to something that somebody making 80% of median income wouldn't have to expend more than 30% of their income on affordable. And what happens if a new affordable housing unit comes into place is it has to be deep restricted for at least 40 years to qualify as affordable and out towards our stock. As of our POCD, we have, in 2019, we had 177 affordable housing units, which is about 3 and 1/4% of our housing stock. So the state would like to see us somehow get to 3 and 1/4 of 10. And sort of the stick the state uses is they provide a mechanism for any developer who wishes to develop affordable housing to sort of come in and what would happen is they would come in with a development that may not meet our zoning codes, maybe too dense, it may be too, it may not meet dimensional requirements, there may be something problematic that doesn't meet our zoning codes. If we were to buy that application based on our zoning, which is likely, you know, how we would have to handle it if this was being resurfaced, they would then have the ability to go through an appeals process where they can demonstrate that there is no, that there's, as long as they can demonstrate that there's not a severe burden on public health and public safety to allow this development to move forward, then the development would be able to move forward regardless of the town's zoning regulations of the time. And so that's kind of 830G in a nutshell, and with this higher too. Michael, if you have anything you'd like to add?
I think you did a pretty good job. The only thing that I would, I would say is that it's on the town to present to the court why it is detrimental to safety, health, or welfare. So the burden of proof does not fall on the applicant for an 8-30G, should the town deny it.
So we have a lot of residential, single-family residential neighborhoods, you know, some of them have minimum lot sizes. We are, most of our residential housing stock is single-family homes. I myself live in a neighborhood like that. If a home in my neighborhood went up for sale and a developer wanted to take this single-family home that's already there, knock it down and build a six-unit multifamily affordable housing building there, they could use 830G and go through the process and do that despite our zoning regulations. Is that right?
That's correct. The one hitch to this is that, you know, for somebody to build a six-unit development, they would very likely need water and sewer, which most of the town frankly doesn't have. So that would be kind of the hitch. But in theory, if somebody could demonstrate to us that they can get a six-unit development, a single-family home lots, yes, they'd be able to if they can get it.
Okay. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is developing, has developed these regulations as a way to encourage more affordable housing growth as, you know, in development in town? Is that fair?
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, Adam Grossman? So this trust fund, how would that work in practice? Who has the authority to spend that money? Is it the Town Council with like a public hearing or? And at least, or Dave, if you'd be able to respond, who would administer the fund? How that would be administered, Mr. Chair?
That, once the trust fund is created, there would be an ordinance that goes along with it that creates that trust fund. The Town Council would create some sort of procedures or rules as to how that fund is to be utilized and dispersed and what controls are in place. Just if I could put my two cents in as well, I'm sort of on the same line as Counselor Luba in his thoughts, where I think an incentive rather than more of a penalty, as this kind of comes across, is more of a way to try to induce development. But that's my thoughts. And so I am in agreement with something like that. But also, I'm not sure if Mike D'Amato or anybody is on top of anything, but I've heard some rumblings at the state level that something might be happening with this regulation. I don't know if there's going to be some changes to it or reduction in the percentage, or it might go away. I'm not sure. So that's my two, three cents.
It's my understanding that in the, in the current session, that the affordable housing initiatives that were in committee did not come out of committee. And a lot of them, if I'm not mistaken, were tied to transit-oriented areas. There had been, in the previous session, there had been, you know, legislation looking at a requirement of 10%. And until 10% was achieved, there would be a 2 mil increase levied on towns that did not have that. And they would go to funds in Hartford or by the state that they would then administer. And those, those did not go forward. The thing that we want to make very clear is that we don't see this as a penalty or a carrot. We see this as a different way of being able to get to what we want to have. And because the standard methodology of percentages in a particular zone didn't, didn't do anything, you know, and we don't want to, we don't want to be in a position where we're saying in the RDDs, you know, in the residential zones, we want to have, you know, because they're built out in a particular fashion and going to, you know, the counselor's point that, you know, putting a six or a 10-unit building in a regular lot size, it's going to be almost impossible because of the science of, you know, whether it's the water or the sewage or whatever, you really can't do it. So we have particular areas, TVA being one of those, TVA, GDD, those areas where there are decent land masses, where they do have access to sewer and water, that we see those as being more beneficial, you know. And in particular, if we look at higher density developments, being in that 195 corridor actually makes that more of a community area where you have literally walking, you have walking distance to many conveniences and also very short access to public transportation in our commuter lot. So you can get to the 913 bus or those sort of things. And we look at it as being, it's better to be there than being up in the vineyards or being someplace else because it's really more accessible. So without any question, we do not see this as a, as a stick. We see this as another methodology for us to be able to look at the housing stock here in town and try to figure out how we're going to do it. But once again, if it doesn't make economic benefit, then no one's going to build. And that's why nobody's built yet. So.
And I think that's where my concern is, that, you know, maybe I, maybe the word penalty that I used was not appropriate and I didn't mean it in that respect. But my concern is that it may be limiting who can actually afford to do something like that and discouraging development in that way. So, you know, I think as you all discussed this, maybe there's some other alternatives to accomplish the same thing that you're wanting to do.
And I think part of the conversation is we can only do, we have a fairly set area where we can do things. We can't get into tax abatements and those sort of things, but we can get into regulations on land use. And we've done that, like I said, with, you know, the requirement of 5% or 20% or, you know, doing this. So we, I guess in a way, we forced everybody's hands by putting those regulations in to make it a target that we as a community need to look at and figure out what's the right solution. So, you know, we know, especially after additional deliberation and getting additional feedback, that this isn't perfect. But it's better than what, it's an idea that we think, because it's an option, gives a developer another choice, but it isn't perfect.
All right. Thank you, Andy. So Rita and then Councilor Luba.
And then I'd like to give some insight. Rita was ahead of me, but I, as well, don't forget on your list.
No, thank you. All right, Rita, are you able to, you?
Sorry about that. Yes. So I had a question about how incentives would work. So if you have a tax abatement, would it be a standard abatement that would be offered on a per-unit basis? And would it consider like expenses balanced against taxes collected? And are there any examples similar to the ones with the, with the fees charged? Are there any examples of towns that have done an incentive-based approach with abatements?
I would not stop my head on that.
Yeah, like, did you know many others?
So, you know, one of the things that is, just trying to think close to home, and the key to the one, the towns that are on the list that we've kind of shown you guys are, these are folks that have an operational process rather than just something on paper. But using Mansfield as an example, they have an application before, maybe it's gone through its final approvals. I'm not entirely sure, but. uh may maybe it's gone through its final approvals. I'm not entirely sure, but uh it's a will ultimately be, you know, just over four hundred units. The town is going to be getting a check for one point five million dollars. A large portion of that is because they allowed the developer to purchase a density bonus. The key to all of this is, you know, the developer is going to look at the property. He's going to know how many units he's going to need to make the numbers work. And so if the if the zoning densities provide him with eighty percent of that, then he may decide to run the numbers and buy the twenty percent that he does that he needs so that the project becomes viable. So in the case of of the Mansfield project, he ended up purchasing the most of what he did was was based on the purchasing additional units. I think he ended up uh I was trying to find the the total number. It was it was almost fifty percent, I believe. But I think that that speaks to kind of at least what I'm hearing uh not having been involved in in all of these discussions is that, you know, you want to make, you don't want this to be something that that precludes projects from happening. But we don't actually know what the metrics of those projects are until the person shows up. You know, I my my office is in Loom City Lofts, which is the the mill building in Rockville, the developer of that, who who has talent has has dealt with Joe Valone. I'm working with him on another project and very quickly he he can tell how much density he needs. And so I'd been thinking, is there a way for us to examine some of these properties that might be supportive of these projects? Get a sense of what the market would demand for units and kind of work backwards into the math. Because it seems like that's sort of the missing piece that is why some folks are uncomfortable. Maybe that was too long of an answer, but I'll mute myself now.
So can you, Mike, what what kind of densities does Mansfield? What kind of density is that that the developer bought in Mansfield? Do you know? Is it?
It is. It's right around three units an acre.
All right, are you all set, Rita?
Well, that that doesn't really speak to the issue of tax abatements, which, you know, having read a little bit about them and experienced them a little bit can be somewhat willy-nilly. And so there it I'd be worried that there'd be a lack of standardization if you're doing it deal by deal. And so I was looking for examples where towns had given tax abatements and had some formula-based approach perhaps. It sounds like that hasn't happened yet, though. Am I right?
I don't recall, Lisa and Tom, I think the last time there was a major tax abatement would have been for a field stone, probably, right, Lisa? If you've got any more around at that point, that's the last I can recall where the the town provided an abatement to a business.
I think so.
But there hasn't been any for housing around the state.
I've been doing some for for another town that I'm I have a project and I've been doing some research into these abatements and incentives. And, you know, I haven't seen I haven't, I read about six today, actually, and I haven't seen anything specific to housing. You know, generally speaking, and if you've if you've worked with these, you know, that they're they're usually based on what is the what is this the current value, what is the new value? And how do we prorate that that delta? So I don't think there's any reason why you couldn't take that sort of standard formula and apply it in this case because of these properties are still taxable, even if it's an eight dash thirty G fully, you know, compliant property, they're not exempt from tax. So I think you could do that. I'm trying to pull up the statute.
How housing housing demands different services than business. So there's, you know, affordable housing involves kids and houses, going to schools. You know, it's it's a different set of services than businesses which are fairly vanilla.
So that's not necessarily, I mean, they're depending upon the housing that you're building. If it's one-bedroom, two-bedroom, you're not going to see a lot of kids in those. If you're doing three-bedroom, four-bedroom, then that definitely changes things. So it depends.
Just to clarify, so under the statutes, provided the development has more than four units, it would be eligible for a tax incentive program.
Yeah, I believe our current tax abatement ordinance specifically allows for for multifamily commercial areas.
Are you all set, Rita?
I'm good. Nope. Thank you.
So councillor Luba, follow me, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Then, I mean, just doing quick calculations, I mean, looking, taking the example which Mr. D'Amato gave, where even if the property in Mansfield said if it's a four-hundred-unit property and they purchased two hundred units for density purposes, based upon their, based upon their figures at thirty-six hundred dollars per unit, that's a cost of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the developer, which is still a large large amount, but that's something that could be calculated in. That same unit within the within 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 talent would be ten million dollars. I mean, so put it in perspective, who's going to invest that ten million dollars in a talent when they could go over to Mansfield and pay less than a million? So we have to take a look. We're not just promoting the affordable housing within talent. We're promoting, I mean, we have to take a look at the surrounding areas and the costs that are are associated with surrounding areas. If I was a developer, I'll pay seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to to go over to to Mansfield and build that building rather than paying that amount or even looking at that amount over here. If we're looking at promoting economic development within talent, but also promoting affordable housing at the same time, I think that really looking at the at the issue regarding the tax abatement, where just coming down to the most basic, you know, basic purpose, where you say that for every unit, so if you if you have five percent of your units meet affordable housing, meet our requirements, so five percent of them are are considered affordable housing, then that five percent could get a complete tax forgiveness for for a year or two years. And that way, I mean, it's plain and simple. I mean, not necessarily that's how that how it will work, but for for Rita's question, that's really the essence of it, where if you meet five percent, rather than if you don't meet five percent, you have to pay fifty thousand. If you meet five percent, then for those units, you get tax forgiveness for a year or two years or however long it is. That, I mean, that's really sort of just the basic nuts and bolts of it where you can work in the formula later on. But I think that's how it comes down to where a a question, though, that's my comment, a question that I did have for the planning and zoning is that when you're developing the current current regulation, there's no provision inside there to allow for any variation for the planning and zoning. There's no you know, basically got it. Planning on, it's been a long day, so forgive me, that there's no way, there's no ability for planning and zoning to grant a variance or to have any type of authority to sort of deviate from this provision. Was that intentional? Was that something where was that something that the planning and zoning said, we do not want to provide ourselves the authority to to provide, to allow a a variance or deviation based upon the circumstances that may present for us? Because right now, you're locked in. There's no way that planning and zoning can change their decision on it. There's no way that planning and zoning can get involved in this. Was that by intent or is that by or is that was just oversight? Either way, I I I think that that's a fatal flaw in this as well, where planning and zoning, you should have some authority to at least say, okay, give grants, given this, that we that we're going to allow a deviation for this purpose.
Doesn't that, David, open us up to a lot of issues where we deviate for one person and not the other and we can't explain why or justify why we allowed one person out and the other one not? Isn't that the whole reason we didn't do that?
That that, yeah, I mean, I I think that would be the the rationale behind it, obviously, if we do have a a rational justification that we can justify on the record that demonstrates why we're doing one for one, left for the other, we can we can go that way. But yeah, I think that that was the intent of creating.
But there should be a reason. I mean, that that you should be able to validate why you did this thing anyway. I mean, I think that sort of just begs the question where if you're going to grant a variation, you should have a reason and you should be able to state that reason. And that 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 gives you, you know, that gives you the authority to go forward. But anyway, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I'm actually glad you went first because I wanted to clarify a lot of things as I've been uh involved with this since I was an alternate doing the plant conservation development. And you made the exact point when you said, why would you build here when you could go to Mansfield and spend seven hundred and fifty thousand? That's exactly why our price isn't that cheap. We don't want people to buy out of this. The whole reason, I mean, trust me, I'm pro-business. I'm not in favor of punishing people. Thirty-six hundred dollars is less money than somebody will lose on a one-bedroom unit in a year in deed restricted. Of course, they're going to buy out at thirty-six hundred. They'd be stupid not to. The whole reason, and we 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 went round and round on this for a long time. And we're going to get punished by the state. Once we hit that ten percent quota, then somebody couldn't come in with eight thirty G and just say, hey, we're going to build, this is what I'm going to build. I don't care if planning and zoning doesn't like it. If we make something too easy, if we only do a small in lieu of fee or if we do uh density bonuses or we do tax abatements only if somebody's willing to do it, but we don't force anybody to do it, we will stay at three point two five percent affordable housing forever. So we wanted to find a balance and I'm not saying fifty thousand plat rate works. That was something we had to start with and we didn't have a lot to work with. So we're not opposed to working with that number and coming up with more of a percentage because it doesn't work on a large unit. If you're building something and it's six or seven bedrooms and you got to pay fifty grand to get one unit, not, it's probably going to be beneficial for you opposed to if you're building something that's two hundred units and you have to spend millions. So it actually kind of works better on a small scale because you can keep your rent up and you can make that back quicker. What we didn't want to do was make something so cheap that everybody chose to buy out of it and we never got any affordable. So one of the things, well, you know, we might want to revisit our dollar amount, how it's how it's applied to units. Like I like some of the other towns that are, you know, five dollars per thousand dollars of building expenses and they have more of a variable that's going to go with your project opposed to a fixed rate. But what we definitely don't want to do is make something too easy or too cheap that everybody chooses to never build for. Because at that point, yes, we might get development, but we'll never get affordable. And unfortunately, one of the biggest things is is the state's holding our hand at this. The state's forcing us to have ten percent affordable or eventually we're going to get punished. If they start going up on mill rates, our mill rate town is going to go up and our tax is going to go up. And if we just do tax abatement incentives, we're going to be giving away tax money while we're getting tax more as a town because we don't have enough affordable.
Well, but but at the same time, if you don't get that affordable housing developed, we're still in the same spot. I mean, if it's something that people aren't going to come here and to build at all, then we're still in the same spot where, yeah.
And we're in the same spot. If we use Mansfield and people just buy out of a one point five million and we still get no affordable, we're still in the same spot. We're just getting one point five million. So we have to figure out how we're going to spend that. And one of my only concerns with the in lieu of money is how we spend it. I don't agree with with punishing one builder two hundred thousand dollars to not build four units and then giving that money to the next builder to make his build easier. So I think one of the big things that we had to figure this out, put something together so we could initiate the town council trust where we can discuss all of this. But I do think spend, how we spend it is very important because if me as a builder has to pay two hundred grand and then Adam comes in and you give him that two hundred grand to make his easier, I don't think that works. But I do think we need to find something that works where we actually get affordable instead of just getting money that we're not gaining anything from.
Next, a clarified question.
Yeah.
When Andy, when you guys were looking at this fifty thousand or maybe David, when you guys were looking at this fifty thousand dollar limit, was the idea behind it that it would be high enough so that the developers would then just be induced to default to a percentage rather than trying to pay the money? Is that the idea? And you said Don Coleman thought that this was a reasonable amount that would spur an action that was more favorable. Was that the the rationale behind like picking that level?
I mean, quite honestly, it was the first time that we had, you know, we had looked at this as being an option because it we 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 had not heard of buyout. And because we'd always been playing, not playing, but looking at the percentages. And in looking at the option, and I think Joe's right, we were we were trying to figure out if the goal is to truly get more affordable housing, we want more affordable housing. And if there's, you know, a a developer who is set on being in talent, but doesn't want to do affordable housing, you know, in after July first, then, you know, if we're not going to get our affordable housing, maybe we can get some some fees that can help in the future either acquire lands or change deeds or something like that that could help us get to affordable housing. So the fifty thousand, I, you know, we had been thinking about the bigger projects and we didn't think that, you know, that sort of a buyout would be that much of a difficulty. I think that the smaller ones at fifty thousand becomes an issue. We didn't think about that. We were only thinking in the larger uh the larger aspects. But once again, it comes down to economics. If they're not going to build because it doesn't make sense because you can go down to Mansfield, there's not a whole lot that we can do about that.
So there's not really any other examples, but is there any kind of sliding scale for the dollar amount or, you know, would it kind of defeat the purpose of that flat fee, fifty thousand dollars that we did? It said up to fifty thousand, created a range of, you know, ten and twenty thousand.
We didn't, we didn't know. I mean, we didn't look at the sliding fee and I think that Joe's point about having consistency. Um, you know, we try to be able to, you want to have predictability when it comes to land development. And we don't want to be in a scenario where we're, you know, there's there's a they got it because they're them and they didn't get it because we wanted predictability. But again, we needed to do something. And we wanted to put it in there and we, quite honestly, we thought, well, if we don't get it perfect, we've got until July that we can go back and make changes to. But we did, we wanted to put a line on it so we can get things going. Because if we don't put a date on it, then nothing happens.
Okay, thanks. So councillor, you to check in.
Mr. Chair, I mean, one thing that I was going to suggest is, given the fact that we have a short timeframe, we're talking basically July first is when this when this ordinance goes into effect. Maybe this is something that we could look at doing a joint task force with two members of planning and zoning, two members of the town council, sitting down and actually hashing through this and coming back with a recommendation. I think that's something that really would be beneficial where we could have, you know, we could have the both sides meet and talk about this and sort of work through this and then, you know, report back uh in a matter of like, say, two months or a month and a half uh and to the to both sides and say, this is what we've seen and this is what we can propose. Because I think that there's a lot of options, there are a lot of possibilities out here that we can examine. But that right now, we really need to start looking at some of the nuts and bolts and start putting together some some ideas rather than just sort of discussing things, you know, as a whole in a in a sort of a nebulous area. That's just, that would be my proposal at this point. I'm sorry if I didn't even speak out, you know, out of line, but I think that that's something that maybe this would help us get down to the granular area that we really need because I think that we're working in a short timeframe and that this is something that really would that might be conducive to to coming up with some proposals.
Thank you, councillor Luba. I think wants to, councillor, you to check in. Any other anybody's after.
Evening, everyone. Um, do we know how potential wires fail that believe Santini is the worrying side interested in building in town? And if they spoke how they feel about affordable housing and the different options that are out there?
Yeah, so when we first met with these Santinis back in uh I I guess a couple of years ago and now when they came in for a regulation change in uh about a year ago now, um to allow for multifamily GDD, we discussed affordable. And they made very clear and known certain terms that they are not interested in doing affordable and they will not come to talent if we, someone's to suggest that they're they're required to do affordable. As far as Steve Williams, I I don't know his opinion directly. I know he is on the call, I believe, as as Barbara there. So I I guess maybe if he has an opinion, I I don't know when the I think there's many public talents, I believe, of the chair as to how how to handle that.
So the Santinis don't want to build here, but it sounds like this is a state requirement. So where are those? Does he have to pay to do that for one housing?
Right. So so there is no hard state requirement. This was something, the state requirement is or or state, I don't, I wouldn't call it a requirement, I'd call it a a sort of
Tide line, goal.
Right, right. It is that we get to ten percent affordable. The Santinis, I Um, the Santinis, uh, submitted a development application prior to July 1st deadline, so they, they would be subject to these provisions.
Do like what Council Luba suggested, we add hack our subcommittee? This is a short timeline, I feel like it could be rushed, and this is a lot to take in. So, I, I do think that could be a potential, maybe even someone from the EDC that could read on it as well.
Thank you, Council, you to check in, Joe, you're getting up again?
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I think one of the things I would say with the ad hoc is, you know, you're gonna have two people out of a commission, we're gonna discuss things. It doesn't mean everybody's gonna agree and vote on things. I think the big thing, the big goal we were trying to obtain here is not necessarily the regulations in how we're gonna take the money, because at the end of the day, that is a planning and zoning matter. What we're really trying to figure out is setting up the fund and how you guys would be willing to spend the money. We're, we're willing to work on the collection thing like that, but at the end of the day, our goal and what we, we are required to do on planning and zoning is to try and get more affordable housing in town. And allowing people to buy out of it for a cheap rate, or giving them, uh, not even requiring it. I mean, we brought it down from 20% the TBA to 5% to try and encourage more development. I mean, I'm, I'm pro-development, I'm pro-business, that is one of the things I wanna do. But at the end of the day, if we make it too easy, we will never get any affordable. And it won't even look like we're, we're trying to make a dent in it. And, and one of the big things is, we're, we are the body that's going to set this regulation and, and figure that out. You guys are the body who's gonna figure out how we're gonna collect the money and how we're gonna spend it. So, if we're gonna do something, one board and the other, we could go back to our board and we could try and figure out a, a, instead of a plat rate, we could try and figure out a sliding scale. Some of the towns do $5 per thousand in building expenses, we could do things like that. I think the big thing we need from Town Council is a fund to be able to collect it, no matter what scale we figure out, and a mechanism to spend it. What is an acceptable way to spend it? What is Town Council gonna be okay with, and how is the spending structure gonna work? Is it gonna be something that has to go through a referendum? Is it gonna be something that Town Council has the ability to get a majority vote on in order to spend the money? Because it's not gonna be tax money, it's gonna be a, a separate pool. But I think the big thing is, we can go back and we can look at, you know, trying to adapt a more of a sliding scale, um, something that's maybe more attainable. But I don't think, I mean, I know me personally, uh, you know, Mansfield, I was actually surprised at how low it is. We don't want something that everybody's gonna buy out of, because it's not gonna really gain us anything. But we do need you guys to tell us what you're okay with collecting and how you're okay with spending it.
Oh, thank you, Joe, and I do agree, I think it might be, well, I don't wanna get too into the weeds, I think it is a good idea to have continued conversations, and I don't know if a subcommittee would be the best avenue, but that might be a good wrap to go. One question I've had, and I don't know if Mike, and I'll let it, Council, hurry, but, kind of Mike or David, if you would know, do any of the towns maybe have this type of fee structure? Also have a nonprofit housing corp? I was just trying to think of similar town where we actually have a corp that manages low to moderate income housing. And if we collected this fee, would it be feasible to then transfer it to them for the purposes of either procuring or further managing, developing that kind of low and moderate income family housing?
Yeah, um, so the one that I'm most familiar with and that has had really good success is called The Hope Partnership. They are in the, I'm not sure exactly where their office is, Westbrook, Essex, Clinton area of the state. Um, and they are a nonprofit, and basically, their intent is exactly that, to develop affordable housing projects. They are, I'm not sure if it's completed, but, you know, an example of a project they just did was a second story of an existing commercial facility in, in Clinton, and they are renovating that, because it was no longer being used into apartments. I'm not sure, they're, you know, they're not many of them in the state. I mean, towns have their own housing authorities that can do this. You know, another one that I'm familiar with would be Button Hill in Wellington. Um, that's a housing authority project and completely affordable. But there's, they're not a lot, because it's a lot of work, uh, heavy lift, and, uh, you know, the funds to, to facilitate those organizations are hard to come by.
That's fair, it's a good point. I was just thinking about alternatives, considering it was Council Murray that mentioned, you know, a lot of Talon is single-family, you know, not really close to any utilities. So, if we gave power to a group like the Nonprofit Housing Corporation, instead of the town necessarily managing procurement of additional houses that went through them, it would be within their, kind of their ballpark, and they know the process, at least for management and rehabbing potentially deed restricted properties. But I'll move on to the Council Murray, and then Council Tom, I think, kind of your question.
I have, I've gone.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, in response to Council Luba's suggestion, um, I wonder if the council has any authority over zoning regulations?
I see Lisa shaking their head, so I'm guessing, uh, at least a response.
Nope.
No.
No, no, that, that's strictly with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The statute states zoning commissions with that, okay, authority. So, I don't know, you, you had responded?
Yeah, that, but we do have, I mean, would be ultimately our decision as far as whether or not we create the housing trust fund that they're, that they're talking about. And so, that's why, sort of, this is, it's not like one or the other, that this is something that requires us both to work together, to find something that's, that's effective. And I think it's also something where, if the Town Council decides that a tax abatement would be something that, that may be more feasible, uh, in our assessment, that's something that then could assist the Planning and Zoning Commission in their determination as far as whether or not that's something that they, that they could incorporate as well. So, I think it's not a matter of us trying to trump them, or them trying to trump us as far as authority. It's something that we both have different purviews over the same thing, and that we need to work together in order to make this efficient, make it effective, and be able to, for it to be properly implemented. So, it's not a matter of me saying, oh, we're telling you what, because just like we can't tell the Board of Education what to do with their funds or how they do certain things, we can't tell them, they're a separate elected board. But this is something that we have a joint purview over, that we have joint authority over in different ways. And so, if we decide not to act on the trust fund, then that means that, then whatever they implemented at this point is essentially ineffective, because there's no way to, to make it operation.
Uh, so, but I would, um, I, I would refer you back to the zoning regulations that we're looking at. If the council does not, uh, start the, the fund, then there is no buyout option, and, uh, that's already been considered in the zoning regulations.
So, like, if we don't come to an agreement on something, everybody has to do affordable or they're not gonna build. So, there's, there's not a benefit for anyone. So, anybody can still come and do 5% affordable and not have to pay the town anything. If we don't figure something out that works and Town Council isn't in agreement to put a fund together, we just revert back to there's not a second option. You come in, you build 5%, and you don't build. So, and you're, but, but for all this like tax abatements and stuff are not our purview. And if, if Town Council says we would prefer a tax abatement, that doesn't mean that that works for planning and zoning, for making a regulation. So, I think, I just wanna like reiterate, I think the biggest reason we wanted to have this conversation was not necessarily how much money we're gonna collect or what we're gonna collect, but is Town Council in favor of making a fund, and how would you guys like to spend it? We can work on what we're gonna collect or what we're gonna implement, and that is what we, our board is to do. But the big thing is, is are you guys in favor of a fund? That we can use in some sort of manner, that, that is all up to your guys' purview, how we're gonna spend it, what we're gonna do with it. But, at the end of the day, if we don't wanna remove that 50,000, and we're not in favor of an abatement, we're the ones making the, the regulation. Like, we wanna work on it, we wanna make something that works. But I think the big thing is, is how would we spend it? Then we can figure out what we would collect.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, you, um, you made a lot of my point there. I think, I see this as the Planning and Zoning has come to us and said, this is what we've set up as regulations, and we wanna talk about the trust fund, uh, that we haven't been asked, council has not been asked by Planning and Zoning to consider abatement. Um, the, the Planning and Zoning Board has asked us to consider a opening a fund.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, Lisa, in, or maybe, I'm sorry, maybe this is a more appropriate question for David, I guess I don't know, in our packet, and I'm looking on page 16, uh, it says the, uh, in order to facilitate the administration of this effort, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the creation of a new housing, I'm sorry, affordable housing, affordable housing committee could be structured in a manner similar to the Land Acquisition Advisory Committee, with staff serving as the majority of the committee. So, um, can you, can someone tell us a little bit more about the Land Acquisition Advisory Committee? And how that works?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, and I, that probably should more appropriately say that that's a staff recommendation, I don't know if the commission has formally endorsed that, so just wanna clarify that. But the way the Land Acquisition Advisory Committee works is when, uh, uh, when there is an interest in the town acquiring property, there's a, a committee that consists of, two council members, I believe, myself, the town manager, the town attorney, and, and Jim Putton, who's the Conservation Commission Chair. And, and what we do is, we, we consider that property acquisition, and then, and then make a recommendation to council, who's the actual acting body on whether or not we, we move forward with the, with the purchase process. If we were to not route it through nonprofit and, and do a separate body, that, a, a structure similar to that, maybe with slightly different people, and it seems like something that may, may work, you know, I, I think the, the key here is that, you know, we would envision that this fund would be getting, you know, frequent deposits or withdrawals. It could be, it could be many years more money sits there, or it could be, uh, you know, and so it'd be up to council, I suppose, to determine what the best, sort of administrative apparatus is, but at least from, sort of our view, that seemed like the most streamlined way to, you know, go about doing that, where you're the ultimate sort of authority, but you have, you know, a sort of a committee believed that makes recommendations.
And, um, I, I heard several people say, both from this meeting and the previous Town Council meeting where this was brought up, that there are concerns about the town being in the business of, of being a landlord, um, and, and purchasing and managing housing in general. Could we, could the council say that these monies cannot be used for the town to directly purchase and manage property? That it could be, that basically taking us out of the business of being a landlord?
Yeah, you could structure the ordinance to restrict, yeah, I mean, it's, it, you would need to specify some allowable activity within the statute that authorizes these trust funds, but you could not give yourselves the ability to, to buy housing directly yourself.
Does the land use, I'm sorry, does the Land Use Acquisition Advisory Committee have a corresponding ordinance?
That I don't know, Lisa, do you know?
Okay.
Not off the top of my head, I'd have to go through our code of ordinances and see.
Okay, 'cause you had suggested, you had said, Lisa, that if we were to create this fund, that there would have to be a corresponding ordinance involved? And then the ordinance would lay out the guidelines, the stipulations, the allowable and unallowable?
Exactly.
So, do, so do we have any examples, is basically what I'm getting at, of how we could do that? So, that, that would be great to see if, if there are examples available.
What we, we would have to see what is, I know there was some that David did get from other communities, right, David?
Yeah, Don Polwin provided us with a, a special, some draft text that could be the basis of an ordinance, though.
Yeah. It's just, um, is Mike D'Amato still on the, the meeting?
I'm here.
Mike, if, just a thought with this ordinance and the trust fund, would the town be able to contract with a developer that does solely affordable housing to say, we'll give you such and such amount of money that's in that fund, or whatever, to create the, you know, to go ahead and move forward and do their own development, and use the funds towards that? But us not being involved in the actual management of it, is that something we could do?
Yep, you, you could, you could use that money to assist in his land acquisition, you could use it in construction, you, you can even use the funds in, you can use the money in the housing trust fund to improve existing, um, deed restricted housing units. So, if you have a housing project that is deed restricted, and let's say it's in dire need of renovation, and, you know, it's, it's, you could use those funds for that. All of that is dictated in the, um, in the statute, but you could do all of that.
But that wouldn't help us get to, get to the 10%. I mean, yes, I could see using it for refurbishment of areas and such, but if we were trying to get the town to that 10%, wouldn't it more appropriately be used to try to get a developer in here, into Talon, to try to move forward with something to get us to that minimum that we have to be at?
Yeah, uh, for sure, the, the, sort of the, where things start to fall apart is that, you know, unless you're collecting a fee per unit that's equivalent to the cost to construct it, you're never gonna be able to give the developer enough money to, you know, actually put him in a position where it's, there's no cost to him. So, you can try to incentivize the density, you can, if you reduce his upfront costs, and he can leverage that over the period of the project, and yeah, those things all work. But the construction costs, you know, you'll never, even $50,000 a unit, you couldn't build it for that, and that's, that's the hard part, but you absolutely could do that, and, and, uh, some towns I know are, are working to facilitate that now.
Mike, do you know what the statute is that you referred to?
Which, for the housing trust fund? Um, yes, it's, it comes under, it's chapter 137, hold on one second.
Oh, no.
It's eight, two.
Eight dash three, uh, eight dash three, three, six.
Looking at it. It's okay. I hope, it's okay that you don't know off the top of your head, it's lots of statutes, can't know all.
Yeah, I can, I can pull it up.
It's a, it's a staff fight, we'll show you how good our staff is.
I think it's eight dash three, three, six, I just don't know what letter.
I'm good, thank you.
Because in the meantime, Council Tom, you had a counter question, or if you were good?
The only question I have, which is, uh, David, uh, what's the Santini, and I wouldn't like to say.
Uh, yeah, so, so, as I, I, so, Santini, we, before we actually brought this whole concept forward, we, they have come in for a regulation amendment to allow to do multifamily development in the Gateway Drive District, which we, which we approved. And the discussion on affordable housing, uh, came up, and, and they made very clear that, if they were required to do affordable housing, they would not be interested in, in moving forward on their development. Uh, as far as what Steve Williams would say, I, as I know, I believe he's on the call, so I know, maybe let him speak for himself, as, as we get from the meeting, yeah.
So, the one thing with the Santini conversations, we actually never talked to them about in lieu of. They just told us they do not build affordable housing, that it's not the business they're in, and if we strictly required it, they would not build. We had never had the conversation with them if they would buy out of affordable. Um, so that would be a good conversation to have with them, as well as Mr. Williams, because, uh, they just said that's not the business they're in. But, uh, they might not be opposed to being able to purchase out of it still.
And I think, I think you, yeah, Andy, and Rita, and Council Luba, they can, they're in.
I, I think the way to look at this, you know, in non-building terms, is consider this to be like a 529 or a Chet account, where you're able to put money away for education. And now that education, it doesn't have to exactly be college, it could be community, it could be, uh, trade schools. But you're gonna use this money for a better purpose or for a consistent purpose. We felt, you know, the whole conversation here is, we need to have a place to park this. We felt, you know, the whole conversation here is we need to have a place to park this money that's going to be used for. For affordable housing. And we can't do that. So that's, you know, that's really where the conversation comes in the point and then the utilization of it, just like a chat account or just like a five twenty nine account. You can decide where it's going to go. Now, it's going to depend upon the projects to come forward. But at least we're doing something and, you know, we're playing, there there are two components here. That that we we have discussed in our in our P O C D was not only. You know, the the housing that we're looking at is to expand the the stock that we have. Meaning we need to have higher density, multi-family as an option, because that's a movement that people are moving to that. The market in some cases is not exactly always for brand new houses. Folks are downsizing, folks are moving away from having to take care of their yards and things like that, so there's there's that component. And we think that the Santini property or the Santini project can help in that matter. But this is the the other side of it, which could be multi-family that could be affordable. And, you know, we hadn't even thought about single family that could have been affordable, that could be helped by this fund. So there could be that potential to buy down the deed as long, I mean, buy down a mortgage or buy down something else, so we could have. Homes that could be low income. Now, how that gets administered, how that gets taken care of, that's outside of our purview. But, you know, that's that's another aspect that we're seeing, you know, coming through the coming through the 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 sessions where. It's not just multi-family that should be affordable, looking at houses that can be affordable. So we saw that fund being like a chat, like a five twenty nine that can be used in a way that best suits the town and best suits the situation.
Thank you, Andy, I just wanted to make a note for the record, Lisa, that that gets remember P D C arrived at eight twelve.
I I was going to ask if the fund could be used for low interest mortgages that would result for a single family homeownership that would result in deed restrictions. So. That way the town doesn't own it, the individual owns it, but it's restricted and continues as affordable. And provides homeownership for young families, you know, at the same time.
The only concern I have about that, and I'll just interject, I'm sorry, is that if we're looking at moving the needle. So that we have, you know, more units. It's a single unit here or there is not going to move the needle for us, and that's why we're kind of looking at multi-family, but then again. It could be an option, you know, in re in reality, for us to hit the numbers, the goal that the state is looking for. We're going to have to find a way to build one thousand affordable units in this town.
Well, I I was thinking the homeownership opportunities for young families that can't afford to stay in Talon would be a nice thing that suits. The citizens of Talon versus necessarily what the state's inner requiring. Because if you look at the price of some of the smallest houses in this town, they're wildly expensive.
All set, Rita?
Yep, I am, thank you.
You know, Councilor Lou, then I remember I had a couple of questions to comment on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no, if I could just, you know, a few questions here. One is, how many units is Santini proposing to build?
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty, so five percent of two hundred and forty roughly is.
Twelve.
Twelve, so you're talking six hundred thousand, no, yeah, six hundred thousand dollars that he'd be looking to pay if if he did not. If he chose to continue on, but still have to face that, that's six hundred thousand dollars. I can tell you that, you know, through unofficial channels, but just through back channels, it's probably just general talk. From what I've heard is that that's something that he would, if he was faced with that, he would not be building. That's, I mean, that's just what I've heard through the grapevine. I haven't had any direct discussion, I'll make that clear, there's been no direct discussions with me with any of them. But just what I've heard is that if it came down to something where they had to pay something like that, they would not be building here. Now, one thing that I would like to address is that I think that. That a point that was brought up is that the P C C and 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 town council are separate entities and we don't have authority over one another. But at the same time. P C C has boxed us boxed us in. With the with what with this. Regulation that they've created, where basically you've passed this and that you're telling us now. Your only issue is to create this trust fund, and if you don't create this trust fund. Then all that's going to apply is the five percent regulation that that's all that we can do. So basically, we have no say in what in what this is, and we were never asked at any point. To as far as, hey, this is what we're looking at, how could we best, what hope can we work together? It was basically, this is what our decision is, now your only choice is either create this trust fund. Or don't, and then we have to live with that five percent restriction. And that five percent restriction, again, is not something that can be waived. And then, you know, we're looking at the possibility of losing any type of development here. So I think that this is something that, you know, that I understand what I I I agree a hundred percent with what the idea here is. But I think that the the mechanism is is that by saying that all we're going to face with is a trust fund. The devote is either yes or no, we either create or we don't, and if we create it, there's a lot of other issues that are that are involved in it, it's not a simple thing. Whereas we're finding out now, there's a lot of other ways that we need to look at things, we need to do things. And for us to basically now face with do this or else, which is really what the ultimate is here, by by July first. We're boxed in, and I think that that's something where, you know, that's why I'm saying that although I respect with, you know, Joe with what you're saying and everything else that. Really, this is the only thing we have, I think that this is something where had we worked together from the very beginning. That this is something that we could have come up with a constructive way where we could have worked together. And sort of said, hey, look, we may be willing to do these incentives, or we may be willing to do this. But I'm telling you, if it comes down to voting on the trust fund or not, I'm going to know. Because I just, and I and I'm just being a pro with everybody, because there's there's too many other, there's too many things. And we don't have enough issue where right now we're faced with that fifty thousand and that's it. So that if we're looking at possibly changing that regulation to make it a sliding scale. Then why don't we examine everything all over again, because you're going to have to open up that regulation no matter what. Or we're stuck with that fifty thousand. So if you have to open that up to adjust, then why is it that we can't look at everything and examine all options?
So I just want to clarify that, cut anybody off. We created a second vehicle, we created an option, we're we're going to require affordable, that's our job. We we have to do that, so. We created a second avenue other than affordable. We're not saying we won't look at it, but we could still change the fifty thousand, we could put it on a sliding scale, but we can't do anything more without a fund. So.
But I disagree, because the thing is, if you have to open up that the regulation. To change that, then we can, then all the options are on the table.
Any sort of collecting money we need a fund for, so we're going to do any sliding scale, we're going to do a dollar per thousand. We need somewhere to put that money, we need a way to spend it, so without a second avenue, a developer's only option to support.
Right, but but again, my point here is that you need to open up that regulation. In order to adjust anything beyond that fifty thousand, that fifty thousand is in regulation right now.
Correct, you're 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 right, you are correct, yep.
That fifty thousand, so if we're going to change that to say it's going to be sliding scale, you have to redo the regulation, correct?
Correct.
So if we're going to redo the regulation, then why can't we examine that overall regulation? To determine whether or not a trust fund is the appropriate that vehicle to do this. You have, I mean, you're you're sort of putting a pepper for the horse, you're saying, we need the trust fund and then we'll decide how to do this. I'm saying, no, we should decide to do this and see if the trust fund is the best way to do this as opposed to tax incentives or or other things. We have to, we have to open up the regulation no matter what. In order for this to be, in order for us to make any changes, so if we're going to open it up. For that purpose, why don't we open up for the entire purpose and start from square one so that we can build something that works for both sides? Rather than just saying it's a trust fund or nothing. And I see Ms. Murray's.
I have a couple of comments and questions first. I would say in general, in favor of kind of getting an affordable housing trust fund put in place, I think we should continue having those conversations. This is more probably. Structural in nature in terms of the questions, Lisa, so for the ordinance, if we're going forward, that we would have the Republican here.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
In terms of the ordinance, if you were to create a housing trust fund, we have to have an ordinance that requires public care, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So it would take at least two meetings, but you also have to discuss what you want to go into that ordinance as well. I mean, we would try to put something together as a staff for a recommendation, but. You're the ones who are going to have to bless whatever is put forth.
It would be pertinent or appropriate to have P C C or E D C provide input at those hearings, I know we're kind of saying we have separate powers, but in terms of having those conversations. You know, are they reliable? And then if we were to forward the affordable housing trust and had a committee, could the P C C be a part of that committee? Or I know Mike's going to fit up as well, so maybe the official commentary, but are there examples of. Affordable housing committees where there's a a member from town council, a member from P C C, you know. It sounds like it's supposed to be a majority staff, so we need to have a member of planning and development. You know, maybe E D C as well, human services, so there's other or yeah, plenty of all. So it would let a staff and maybe even an attorney just to cover.
We would have to get a legal opinion regarding who can serve on on this commission, because I know our charter has some limitations. On certain things.
Yeah, I was thinking of the land acquisition is the comparable one, and that includes conservation council staff, so. These are thoughts, but I think I definitely think that's something we should. Be reconsider and move forward and so sorry, I just wanted to now to make sure of people, because you, because Aaron hasn't spoken yet, so I have an opportunity to go first. And then Councilor Murray, and then maybe I don't know, I will lower their hand, but the official commentary.
I just have a quick procedure question, I guess. If this were to go forward and we start. Per se by scratch, would it be planning and zoning meets first, comes up with what they think is reasonable, receives feedback from. The economic committee, you guys. To kind of create something that might not end up with this fifty thousand dollars. And then would it go towards you guys after we kind of recreated this? And then you go through the ordinance process, or would we be simultaneously working parallel to each other while this is going on?
I think Andy would probably be the best person, I think their hand is up to possibly answer that process question. You know, to me, that sounds like the appropriate methodology, you're perfect process, but Andy, you have any insight in that, that might.
I think I think we're, I mean, there's there's two paths that we have to look at and those paths kind of cross. And, you know, as I said in my preamble, we were in, we were in a position of doing the the P O C update. And we had gone through that process and we knew we had to get something better than what we had before, and it wasn't perfect. And in a way, we kind of looked at it as saying we need to be able to put a stick in the ground and we need to be able to get moving. And so I guess, you know, as Councilman Louisville says, that we kind of put you in a corner, that wasn't the intention, but in a way. It was kind of a kind of the model to be able to move this conversation beyond just what we were doing, and we didn't think it was a bad thing. And, you know, we saw this as being a positive thing, but I think if we do look at, and the point is absolutely true, if we do go and change. The five percent or the fifty thousand to a sliding scale, we're going to have to go back, open up the regulation, have a public hearing. Being able to do that, so that's good, that is going to have to take place, and at the same time, if we wanted to. Because that regulation is open, we could move it to September or October or December. You know, to be able to give additional feedback in regards to what we were doing. So, you know, the the and we're not afraid of doing that, because we can get better ideas and get better information going forward, but. I think that to Aaron's question, clearly engagement with E D C, engagement with. You know, developers in terms of of looking at what is the most palatable way or what is the best way? For us to attract this side of our housing stock. We can probably do a better job. So yes, there's going to be interaction with E D C, yes, there's going to be interaction with the town. Because, you know, it's not just setting up that fund, but then how do we then look at one year, five year, ten years down the line? And be able to say, is it better to do? Deed, you know, deed and deed changes based upon investment, is it better just to build? Is it better to engage a third party or nonprofit to do this for us? Those are questions that we couldn't answer and we couldn't answer in the timeframe, and as we all know, we had other things that we were concentrating on in terms of keeping the town together. So in that in that whole bundle. It's not perfect. Let's find a way to be able to move it to make it better, so the end goal is achieved, so engagement on both sides, yes, that's going to happen. But at the end of the day, we're going to come up with a regulation, you folks are going to come up with a trust fund. And then the follow on work in regards to distribution of funds and the methodology that's going to take place, is that is that help?
Yeah.
Thank you, Aaron, and then Mike, if you wanted to add any answers, I was in regards to Aaron's question or additional commentary.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, clarify a couple of things, so the. The statutes, inclusionary zoning statutes basically set out what you can use the funds for when you collect them, so. There's not a lot of thinking that goes into, you know. Sort of what happens once they go in there, the other thing that I think kind of speaks to Joe's point is that. Based on Connecticut statute, if the P if the P C C is going to change the regulations. They're going to be obligated to find that any change to regulations is consistent with the P O C D. And so. For them to do that, the alternative to the fifty thousand dollar payment has got to be consistent with. The P O C D's sort of play into wanting to encourage affordable housing. I think that if the town is going to go in the direction of an ordinance to to incentivize or or tax abatements or whatever. You know, I think that language probably has to come first, I think the P C C can't move away from what they've just determined is the way to go unless they can point to the other option. But they're not in control of of an ordinance or a tax incentive program, because that would have to be through through the legislative body. So, you know. You don't want to have to have the P C C a couple of months later referring a zoning regulation to CROG, saying, hey, we're going to, we're getting rid of this. And, you know, we don't really have something to point to or and we are now no longer in control. Of encouraging these units, because the process has been sort of taken out of our our house. So I think if you could. And and to use his his terminology of sort of you creating that second vehicle, right? Everything that was the case six months or a year ago is still the case, they just provided this alternative. But I think if the ordinance came first, then I it makes it delineates that process a little better, because they can point to that when they sort of make those decisions.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yes, sir.
So Mike, just, I wanted just to make sure, so what you're saying is develop the ordinance. And then that gives the planning zoning commission the parameters within which to modify the regulations.
Yeah, I think that, well, I I'm just trying to sort of as an outside person. Take what I'm I'm hearing, it sounds like the council won't, isn't interested in or comfortable with moving forward with the trust fund as written. You know, I, as the planner, if my, I would say, let the P C C do what the P C C does and and take their recommendation and consider the housing trust fund. But if that's not on the table, then I think you look at an ordinance. As as that that option, but, you know, they're pretty equipped to make these decisions and and this is really in their wheelhouse, so. I would not move away from the recommendation of the housing trust fund. Too quickly.
Okay.
And then I think Joe would add.
Let Adam go.
Okay, we'll add him to the corner.
Why couldn't we do both, why couldn't the council? Provide a tax abatement and in order to build affordable housing, and if the developer doesn't take it, they still have to either, you know, they would have to pay the the fifty thousand. And I just want to make another point about, you know, Santini saying they wouldn't, they wouldn't come in if they could build affordable housing. Fifty thousand, amortized over twenty units is like twenty five hundred dollars, that is like a rounding error in the building cost, especially now, like, that's a rounding error in the building, in the increase in building costs due to inflation, building materials. So I find it hard to believe that someone would just nip an entire project because of something like that. So those are two separate points, but I wanted to get that in there before I.
I think that's a good question, I don't know, Lisa, if you could do both simultaneously, or if Mike's hand is up, you know, let's start from before or.
I think it's a hangover.
I just wanted, I just wanted to mention one thing, I I'm reading through the Mansfield application just to see if there's any other data that I can sort of mention. They list, because because they're talking about construction costs, so they're saying that their their total cost per I C C, International Code Council, which is. Where they get that valuation for their project, which is which is almost double, right around double Santini, is about fifty three million dollars. almost double, right around double Santini, is about $53 million. So, so if you look at project costs, Santini is gonna be about half of that. You're asking them to pay $600,000 for a project that's probably in the realm of 25 million. You know, at the end of the day, it's, it's not, it's, it's a decimal point.
I, I've spoken with Santinis as well, and they were pretty clear about not wanting to have to pay those extra fees. They're, they've made some complaints about some other, or expressed concerns, I shouldn't say complaints, expressed concerns about some of our other fees as well. And, you know, are they gonna go to a town that they can get it done for a better profit? Probably. But not in town. I mean, they're, they're, I think they're still moving forward in town from everything that I've heard. However, I think if they had a lot of these other restrictions, they may not move forward with it. But at this point in time, they've already applied, they've got their application in process, and so I think they're covered anyway at this point. So that they, they're not required under the ordinance that planning and zoning is putting in place, because they've already got their application in process in, correct?
Correct. Well, we'll, we'll hear the public hearing, but it's a, it's my understanding of the application is in.
Been officially received at this point, so, so there is, you know, no, no question on that.
And then can you reiterate your first questions? I don't know, we didn't really answer yet. I wasn't sure if that was in the Lisa, if they'd be able to answer.
Oh, the idea, just, yeah, why not, why not do both tax abatement or like give people an option, right? Build with the tax abatement or you pay the 50,000. What does it have to be, one or the other?
So. Oh, go ahead.
So, so I guess you could theoretically do that. You'd have to be careful to, you know, if somebody wanted to go like well above and beyond the 5%, and do say 30% affordable housing. Certainly, town council would have the prerogative and potentially the justification to, you know, grant a tax abatement, and, and they also wouldn't be paying fees. You wouldn't want to get into a situation where there's somehow both paying fees and receiving a tax abatement that, that just becomes, but, but, but in that situation, they would be not building affordable, so maybe there wouldn't be a reason for council to provide. So, yeah, I, I think something like that could work. If, if somebody were, you know, go well above and beyond the 5%, or even if they were just to do the 5%, it would be within councils, the authorities would grant a tax. But they wouldn't have to pay 50,000 because they're meeting the 5%.
Right. And I think that's, that's what he's stating, is that if they don't meet the 5%, they pay the 50,000 or whatever number that the Planning and Zoning Commission might revise it to. But if they do decide to move forward, then maybe the town council side has the ordinance and the abatement ordinance to make sure that it covers that they could offer an abatement to help offset that process. And that would certainly be up to the town council on that piece of it. But I think the two, two or three of the groups here really need to work closely together on a game plan and, and determine, okay, planning and zoning wants to do this, council wants to do that. And certainly, if you can come up with a coordinated game plan and work together, then we might be able to accomplish everything. You know, so for example, maybe, maybe you do go ahead and, and move forward. The 50,000 seems like an awful high number, but again, that's for the group to decide how you want to handle that. So maybe there is a trust fund set up to, to take that if, if a developer chooses as such. But then again, you know, al- also try to give them an incentive to say, okay, if, if you do it, this is what we're gonna do for you.
So I think, Mir, if you have, and then Council Murray, did you, did you have at one point, sorry?
I did as well. Eventually, I was, I think I was.
Yeah, you're right. Joe is next, and then, then. I stole the spot. Joe, then I think Council Murray, and then Mir.
So I just want to make this suggestion and possibly point something out. So we've been discussing back and forth for a couple of months, changing this. We had to start with something. We can always go somewhere. Without a fund in place, come July 1st, we're back to builders have one option. With a fund in place, we now know we have a vehicle to collect, we can work on perfecting our process. Some of the towns, based off the numbers Mike Damato just gave us, it's New King is $10 per thousand. That project would be 600,000 based off that sliding scale. So it's, it's the same dollar amount as our scale, just used in a different manner. So at a $5 per thousand, that project, the Santini project would be like 250,000, 265 instead of almost 600. So from a scheme, we're not that far off on the way other people do it dollar-wise. Our number just doesn't always work in every unit. So I 100% agree, a sliding scale is better. But in order, at least come July 1st, we have a second vehicle in place, if, if, if town council is willing to put something together. And we can work on a better sliding scale or something that works better, but without somewhere to put it, if, you know, town council is not favored enough somewhere to put it, there's no point us continuing to figure out how much we want to collect it. We, like, we're the body to collect it, you're the body to spend it. But if you guys don't have a fund to put it in, there's no point us figuring out how to collect it. So in, in, in two months, we're at a standstill. I mean, we've been working on this, we put this back together in November, December? This has been going on for a long time, so it's not like it's new today. I mean, I understand this is our first time as a group discussing it, but there's there's, there's no downside to having the fund. It at least adds a second option. And from there, we as planning and zoning, with recommendations from town council, can try and perfect it, make something that works great, and entices development and gets people in. But without a vehicle to put it in, we are just beating our heads against the wall, because we're not gonna go and have a public hearing and set a whole nother thing up again if town council doesn't have somewhere for us to put the money. So I think, I know my opinion as one of the planning and zoning commissioners is, I'm totally in board to be working on this. I'm not, I don't think this is gonna take a priority on our list to continue to work on it if we don't have somewhere to put the money. Kind of need you guys in order for us to, to do something. I think, I think everybody's in board with it. We, we want to make this work. We want to encourage development. We want to encourage affordable housing. But we need something. So I think the vehicle for people to buy out of it is great, maybe not on our exact scale, but we gotta have somewhere to put it in order to perfect, perfect the scale.
I agree. And this is also kind of part of the impetus of having this conference, this joint meeting, is to have the conversations, we can really work this stuff out, and also the public forums, the public notes that we're actively deliberating together. So, but with that, it was so Mir, Lee, then Council Murray, and then Council Edercheck, and possibly People are saying hands, kind of like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to organize everybody, everybody's seeing like questions.
Doing a great job, Steve. Don't worry about it.
So I just wanted, so this is, so I agree with everything Joe just said. And just a clarification, because I, I, it's very convenient for us to use the Santini development or post-development as a reference point. But to be very, very clear, they've already applied, it's already accepted, so they're exempt from this. So it's natural to, it's not applicable to them. So I think we have to use that as a benchmark also. Understanding that, I think we have to also be very careful about ascertaining about, talking about, like, I heard, they told me, whatever, because they're not here, they're not giving testimony. That's all considered hearsay. So we have to be really careful as legislative, as a legislative body not to depend on that. And to the point about the $50,000, $700,000, sounds like a lot, we'll take that in context, but even 240, if it's $300,000, you're talking $72 million in dollar you know, possible sales, and I'm sure they're gonna be higher than 300 grand, that is a rounding error. You're talking less than 1%, that, you're talking percentages of 1%. So, y- you know, where it comes down to, as Andy said, is smaller stuff. Can we repurpose land? Can we have, you know, smaller developments that can we look at co-op, right? Can we look at, we talked about it under affordable housing, but can we do co-op kind of stuff, right? So create it that way. But to Joe's point, if we don't have anywhere else to go, we're back to a percentage.
Yeah, and I think as you mentioned, the whole public hearing process for.
And we all, we both have public hearings, right? So we both have the opportunity, we afford each other to come to our public hearings and put in comment and, you know, help us make the decision. So.
So then, Council Murray, then Council Edercheck, and then all I'm sure there's everybody else, and I do want to make a point, and, and then we should all talk as much as we can, but I don't know if this public, we did add public comments to the meeting, not from about last minute, but right before the meeting, to ensure any developers or anyone from the public was available to provide input to.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to thank Joe for making things really clear for us. I think that your comments have been very helpful to me anyway, to understand what planning and zoning is asking of town council. And it's also wonderful to hear from multiple members of the Planning and Zoning Committee in agreement with you, and also to hear your willingness to consider the exact dollar figures, the exact process. I, I continue to believe that the zoning decisions and the zoning rules in town are something that planning and zoning needs to continue to stay as their focus and not town councils. I know that when you, for example, this, this new zoning regulation that includes this 5% requirement, that went to public hearing, didn't it?
Yes.
So, any, any member of our town could have come to that public hearing and given input, including members of town council? Okay, so I, I'm glad to hear that we have already had the opportunity to give input into the exact policy and that that policy creation sits in the hands of planning and zoning. I, I think that after listening to a lot of this conversation, that having a vehicle, as, as it was called, to have this money, have a fund for the money, seems like something that council needs to deliberate on. And the rules and requirements and how that, you know, who's on the, the committee to determine how that money gets spent, and any regulations regarding how that money gets spent, is, sounds like it would be great to have a contributions toward that, although I personally would love to see some examples and see the, the statutes, the state statutes that would give us guidelines, restrict, or allow for certain things. I think that would be very helpful while we're deliberating on the exact nature of the fund and how it, how it will be executed. So I think, I, I know it took us a long time to get to this point. But for me, I would certainly be open to, to creating an affordable housing trust fund. But there's a lot of information that I, I want to be provided before I think we can even deliberate on, on what that fund would be about. And I don't know, Lisa, if you, if you heard what I was looking for. I was looking for the state statutes and, for example, from other towns. And I think, you know, maybe we create an open, possibly, one idea would be to create an open invitation from planning and zoning, from EDC, to give input to the council on different details regarding that fund and how it would be executed, who would be involved in making those decisions. I think that there is an opportunity for each of our groups separately to deliberate, consider, and then maybe we come back together again before the fund is fully fleshed out, before we get to the public hearing process, so that these groups would have an opportunity in a meeting like this to give comment directly on the policy considerations that work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murray. Council Edercheck?
So I was just curious, if a trust fund is created, who would be responsible for running that trust fund?
I mean, the council. That's outside of our purview.
Well, that's where, that's where I think the ordinance would have to probably designate which department, I mean, probably all under the town manager's office, and they probably designate, you know, it could possibly be the special projects and grants administrator position. I'm just speculating, it could be someone that would fall into that, but I would assume probably it's housing related, it might be more pertinent to fall under human services or another branch that is overseen by a manager who is overseen by the council.
Most, most, may I interject here? Most, most funds usually, you know, fall within the treasurer, and then, yes, you would have specific individuals or positions identified within your ordinance as to who would be involved. I mean, if you have a committee that is going to control how this is going to be spent, that, that's another way of doing it. Certainly, the cash side of things always falls within the treasurer of the town for actually the safekeeping and the management of the cash flow of those funds. I'm trying to think what else. I know Michael has said with the state statutes, there's specific uses for those funds. So again, David, if you could probably get me a copy of that as well, and some of the examples besides what we have in our packet, maybe we can try to brainstorm and share, share something with the town council to get it on an agenda to discuss this further as far as the fund and, and who would be in charge and, and all that. Maybe we could talk about making some recommendations for the town council, and then they can go from there forward with that. Does that sound reasonable, everybody?
I think it doesn't. I think Pauline, I have another question.
So thank you for answering that, and we're supposed to have all this decided by July 1st, or not July 1st? July 1st keeps coming up a lot. But it doesn't sound like we really need to have all this completed, and ordinance, and public parents, and maybe a subcommittee by July 1st.
There's no firm requirement that it be completed by July 1st. What will happen on July 1st is, with no formal action by, by planning and zoning or by town council, for 5% of any new units to be affordable. Now, you know, would it be optimal to have something in place by July 1st? Sure. If it takes a few more months, you know, that's probably okay, you know, unless we feel like there's a developer anxious to get into town, which, you know, we, we would have crossed that bridge as we got there, but there, there's no hard and fast deadline, I guess, is, is the answer. But there would, would be a requirement that any new multifamily development be at least 5% affordable until we figure something out.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Does the means of spending the money have to be figured out before they can set up the fund? Like, is, does that ordinance have to be in place for them to collect?
Usually, that's how it's, how it's done. You do have to have, when you're setting up your trust fund, any special fund, you have all the guidelines as to how it is to be determined. But what I can do is check with our town attorney to see if there's a way to word it in such a way where we could at least get the fund set up and then have some allowances under the ordinance that lets a committee or identified individuals maybe come up with the uses, and maybe. the uses, and maybe we just stipulate the state statutes within the ordinance. I'd have to look at it.
Planning and zoning would also have the option, I suppose, of passing a, a temporary text change of sorts to admit the July 1st date to a later date, you would have to go through a public hearing process and notify CROG and all that, but if we, I think if part of notification, the CROG said they were extending this out to, you know, January 1st of next year, because we're still studying the issue of the affordable housing trust fund thing, and we'll still be, you know, that's, that's a consistent with the PFCB, so.
And if we extend, there's no five percent requirement for that time being?
If we were to do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's something also probably to keep in mind, too, just as we're having these discussions, is there's likely developers and obviously public record. If they know there's even a hint of either extending the funding, establishing a trust fund at average deadline, it's only going to be until July 1st, and they may just jump in and apply, and they might say, oh, well, they're gonna possibly change the sliding scale and create a second vehicle. Let me hold off for a month or so and see what the process is like, and they could come before the town and provide input at a public hearing at that point, so. That's just another thought that just came to mind, but are there any other members of the council or EDC or PCC, Council Luba? Or, or Council Hall?
One of your comments, like Chairman and Lisa and Andy and Joe, is it possible we can get a meeting as much as possible and then just come up with the, the, that's number one, is it, is it possible? Because whatever the informations are, and I don't think so, I can honestly, I'm not, I'm not up to it, like. And the second thing is like, with their training, whatever the legal is, as you said, that should I give it to him or should I give it to a member of the, make it from him, give it to him, it doesn't make sense.
And that would be up to you guys.
So like, whatever they, if we can get a legal, legal advice from training, I think that would be, and then at the same time, at the same meeting, if we can keep moving, should be as soon as possible, isn't it, you know, rather than wait for the rest of the months. That's my, that's my say, but.
Would the easiest thing to do, and I don't know what the rest of everybody's thought process on that, I, what David just suggested as far as extending it, if we were able to extend it and we're in the same position we're in currently today, where there's not a a five percent requirement, and there's not a fund yet, if we called a public hearing before July 1st and we extended it for four months or six months, something like that. Uh, cause like I said, I know everybody's in favor with having a discussion, trying to rework the numbers. That would give you guys time on your board to have the conversation about how the fund's gonna work and how you're gonna spend it. We could work on the collection aspect, you guys could work on the spending and who's in charge of it aspect. We could have a meeting from the time when we have it extended till we're gonna try and do a public hearing and change our regulations, so we could talk one more time before we change the regulations again, and maybe that would be so we're, we're not, in two months, you guys don't get a majority vote on the fund, and we're not automatically requiring people to do five percent without giving them that second vehicle. Is that something that like everybody would be in favor of? Because that might be the easiest option is to just push it out a little bit so that nobody feels rushed.
Yeah, I think, to me, I think that seems.
That's up to you guys. Again, it's already been said, that's not our purview. But it's something that I think, you know, both, everybody's here, so I mean, what do the commissioners and the chairman of planning and zoning think? I mean, we want to revisit this anyway. Uh, are we in favor of taking a couple more months to give town council some time to digest this and have conversations among themselves before we meet again? And maybe we use that July 1st deadline as a deadline for us to meet again, instead of a deadline for.
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say a couple of months, I would say about at least maybe three weeks, come back and then. I'm not, it's like, the, you don't want to, we don't want to go ahead and add to that line. So if we go one, number two is, two to the top. The only credit I can give it, because I like the idea of something is completely sound, this properly. And something is completely sound, and hopefully it would open the door for other people and attract other businesses, so like, you know what? There's only reason I'm attracted to this, and let's hope we can come on the same page.
I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, I mean, at least on our end of things, you know, we need, what do we, what do we need, two weeks now, the 11th? That's the next, what we need.
Yeah, because we just had a meeting on Monday.
We do, we did this past Monday and do something like we did for the drafters, where, you know, our commission just kind of has a brief discussion, just to kind of keep the conversation going. Um, I know in terms of if we were to reopen the regulation, we wouldn't probably be able to do that until either the following meeting or the meeting after that, because we already have, you know, feel so conscious of the agenda and stuff.
Well, if we're gonna have a discussion about it, we wouldn't be able to have a public hearing for 30 days after that.
Right, exactly.
That's correct.
So. In a position for that, so I'd be fine with having a discussion at our next meeting, you know, as a planning and zoning commission, to see where we would like to go, and I don't know if we're allowed to have public comment in that specific conversation. But Andy or David?
Might be worth pushing a couple meetings, if we were able to have two meetings to have discussions, you guys were able to have two meetings to have discussions, and then we could try and get back together before we set a public hearing for anything.
Oh, yeah.
That way, we were kind of on the same page. I, what is the chairman's thought on that?
It works for me.
I mean, at least for me, it works, and the other thing that the other X factor we have is that there are two other councillors who aren't here tonight to provide input or thoughts, or I mean, we have a forum, and we have a majority in town in decision, but, you know, we are short two council members, so. And I thought, I lost my other, my other thought for a moment. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to maybe defer for a, defer for a moment, and I have another problem, come back to me.
No worries. Thank you, I thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, no, I, I agree. I mean, I think that to Ms. Murray's point, there was a public hearing on it, but this is something that should have, that when we have a public hearing as, as far as the town council, it affects other boards and other commissions, we normally invite them to come and speak, and I don't recall getting one to, to speak to this, and I think that this is great now that we're doing it. I think that unfortunately, it's after the regulation already been passed. So now we're trying to correct some things and trying to be, uh, to match each other up when we've already got something that we're now facing this deadline where I wish this had happened before. But that, it's all underwater on the bridge. My point is, though, I appreciate Adam and Joe, your comments. I think that it really, that, I think they sort of crystallized my feelings on things, where I think that, yes, Joe, that, that going forward with that and having that trust fund is the mechanism that gets things going, and I think that's an alternative. And Adam, I think that you presented a great, great thing as well, where I think that's something that I would highly suggest that we also consider is doing a bifurcated, or like a dual, uh, dual approach on it, where you have both. I, I hate using that analogy with the carrot and stick, that we, if you, if you meet the five percent, or you go above the five percent, then there could be a tax abatement. If not, then you could pay the, pay the fees, and I'm glad to hear that at least it seems the general consensus with the PCC is that you're willing to examine a sliding scale. I think that's something that would be extremely important. That's the one thing that helped me back the most, is having this flat scale where it disproportionately affects people. But I think that, I think that we're on the right path here. I'm glad to see that there's, that now that we're discussing it, that there is getting be a, a way forward that will, I think, meet all the desires of everybody here. Again, we're all looking forward to try and promote affordable housing. I think it's just that there's some divergent opinions as far as what the best way is to do that, and I think with both those proposals, I think that's, I think that's a solid way to go forward. So I appreciate, I appreciate both your comments, and again, it tremendously helped me put things into focus, so thank you.
So and the only one other thing I'd like to point out.
Jesus, Joe, what? So.
The fact that we've been discussing something all this time that town council is gonna have to approve. The town council liaison should have brought that back to town council. That's, I'm pretty sure why you guys have a liaison, and our board is exactly for that reason, so. That is just one thing that maybe, you know, the town council liaison has to remember, like, if, if we're discussing something that's gonna impact you guys over a term of, I mean, we were discussing it for six months at multiple meetings.
Yeah, we were.
That's something you guys definitely should have known about through your liaison.
Yeah, and we, we were never informed, so.
That's fair. When I got back to my, my second thought was, it ain't, it turns out so complicated to keep, I know we have certain guidelines and parameters, like, you know, meeting wise, you know, three weeks might not be feasible. But I know at least for the, the, yeah, for the meeting purposes, I know, just to provide additional context for tonight, when we got to this point, being in the margins, I know actually, I think Andy reached out early in the year, or maybe right before the budget season started, and there's kind of a general consensus that trying to fit in during the budget cycle was gonna be incredibly difficult to line all everything and possibly include the budget meeting, so we had agreed upon trying to do it after the budget was adopted, or at least put forward to the town. So that's why we're kind of, at this point, we started pretty close to the July deadline, so. Just wanted to share that for informational purposes. But are there any other questions or comments from councillors, or the commission members, or the EDC? Go ahead.
So for, from, for the council, we're going to start discussing a fund and the rules and regulations around that fund, is that correct?
I think we need to start getting started with maybe some information through, collected and provided by Lisa, Dave, to the council. That was kind of beginning those discussions, but we have to be careful about talking about it as we're establishing the ordinance, because that requires a vote to establish a public hearing, the kind of the hearing to actually put that language together. I would be concerned if we started talking too much into the ordinance language that could be construed as not appropriate.
Well, we have to, we have to come up with ordinance language before we set a hearing on an ordinance, right? What, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 that's what, yeah, that's what I mean, is that there, yeah, we'd have to have a language at least produced and written, that's where we'd come together. It's just more so like, not deliberating in a way that we already are in favor of the ordinance, like discussing it with the public hearing.
Okay, I get it, so thank you. Okay, so as a council, we're going to start getting, seeing some information on statute and some, on statute that might dictate any rules or regulations regarding this type of a fund. And maybe seeing some examples
Yeah.
of other towns, similar fund usage, and how they execute the fund, including the makeup of the committee, is that correct?
Yeah, that'll be great. And I think also, probably, Lisa, we, we might want as many examples as possible, but it'd probably better to have it be, and the council of Luba's point, you know, we want it to be similar communities, you know, it'd be very, a housing trust fund in Hartford would be very different than one in Essex, or you know, Deep River, or somewhere else that's, you know, a more rural or more, uh, more likely to be residential housing.
Sure.
Ninety percent plus.
Okay, uh, and after we review that material, what is the next step?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I think the next step would probably be, uh, at least through Lisa's recommendation, or, you know, the chair and my chair, we got it from the general, the recommendation to set up a public hearing to establish that trust fund.
Okay. Okay, and that process is agreeable to planning and zoning? That's, we're moving in the direction that you guys were hoping we were moving in?
I think so.
Yep.
Awesome. And, um, we were going to try to have some sort of a deadline?
Yeah, I think ideally, while our next meeting isn't until 12, I think it would be probably pertinent for Lisa, myself, and my chair, reading my, my friends available to circle back on any upcoming items that are on the agenda. I know that there's a few engineering reports that are being worked on that might be coming before our students, we're gonna have to additional special meetings or adapt those items to be part of a regular meeting packet, whether it's, you know, the Miracle Field, or the sidewalks on the green, there's those that are probably have the pipeline, we have the mental health task force, probably, I believe, presenting on the 12th, so. Want to make sure it's kind of well balanced, that, you know, if it comes up, it's not any excessively long meeting. But, but then we don't want to get the business done, but I know people have said we want to not be here till 10:00 or 1:00 at night to conduct business if, if we don't have to.
Sure, I appreciate that as well. Okay, so, uh, we're working towards addressing this
Yeah.
ahead of July 1st?
Yes.
At least coming up with, coming to a, a point where we're ready to take a next step ahead of July 1st?
I don't say so unless there's any other commentary, I think.
Not saying we're gonna make a decision by July 1st, we're gonna have a public hearing, but we would have materials to review.
Yeah.
We would have deliberations within council, and maybe come up with uh, at that point, a structure on how we would move forward by, and that would happen by July 1st.
I think so, yeah, by taking those steps, it would be a signal to planning, starting to look into their text changes that could allow for an extension of their deadline.
Okay.
So that everything kind of aligns together.
Okay, great, I appreciate you walking each step through with me, that.
Of course.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
No, it's good, it's good that we'll have this step through, considering not only for the public record, but also to see Lisa's taking notes, I'm writing down some notes, so. Hopefully, everybody is, uh, in, in alignment at that point, so.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I would also, as, sort of building on that, is also making a request that um, in conjunction with getting that other information regarding the, uh, the trust fund, uh, structure, is also, we can also examine tax abatement, uh, structures and the other things, so that we can develop the plans consistent with one another and work in accordance with what's been presented here so far. So that we can, again, take a dual, a dual approach, uh, to, to, to try and get to that kind of goal.
No, that'd be good, and I know that there is, on, I think, the EDC's website, I was just pulling up real quick, that they do list the tax payment program policy for the town, but
Right.
probably having that as well as any particular charter, or, you know, town level statutes and presented or shared with the council would also be good, this is a, have a comprehensive package of information.
Or other, other comparable programs in, in, in surrounding towns.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, let me go back to the packet, pass the minute, so we're back up here. So now we're on item three, which is public comment on the subject of the possible creation of a formal housing trust. We did put a three minute limit in, but I don't see too many other folks that aren't from the public, so. If the one person that has Barbara has their name, if you'd like to speak, you know. All right, you just have to meet yourself.
Hey, yeah, am I unmuted?
You are muted, if you can say your name and, uh, address for the record as well.
Steve Williams, 22 Redansky Lane, Tullen. Just real quick, eh, the regulation, you know, you're talking about the $50,000, but in the event, it, it also says you don't have to do that, you can demand, um, I would assume to build the percentage or whatever, so, just to clarify, that, that was one of the things I, I was looking at. Um, and then, uh, Michael, you said your office is at, uh, Loom City, and, um, Joe Vlone is the owner, I believe?
Yep.
Yeah, and, um, just out of curiosity, you should, uh, there's a letter that he, he was willing to purchase a TVA property from me, and as a developer, I think the letter would um, suffice his opinion on the TVA. Now, it has changed, but maybe you, uh, I haven't spoken with him in years, you could have him relook at it and give his, you know, he might want to as a person that would be a buyer to develop that property, you could get some in, input on the regulation. And for myself, you know, as a taxpayer, landowner in a town, my feeling is raise everybody's tax rate to Mills, Andy, Joe, everybody, everybody can pay for affordable housing. Um, and as far as whether I'd be in favor of doing, I have another parcel, which it was sort of approved for 40 something units. I don't believe you could fit them on there, um, with the current regulations. I wouldn't be in favor of that. If anything, I would be going to the 830G. So as a developer, you know, I'd like to give you my opinion. For whatever that's worth, but thank you for the time.
Thank you.
You know, it's definitely worth it, and, uh, oh, go ahead, Andy.
While we have Mr. Williams, can we ask him like, what sort of scale might work? Because that's one of the things we keep talking about. Like if 50,000 doesn't work, but we want to do something, is, is there something that's like as a developer that is a reasonable expectation to, to pay to not have to build affordable?
Well, I think you're lost in some, some area of, it's your regulations. You know, the TVA, you could have certain height restrictions. You could, you weren't worried about, about the bedrooms. Now you put them in, how many you can have. It's the other part of the regulations. It's, it's not the that percentage. If you go to 830G, I think you're going to find, you know, bedrooms aren't going to matter. The height isn't going to matter. And it's going to be very clear. That's going to be the approach to take. You know, why would I do affordable any more than Eric would, or, or the Santini's? They clearly told you they're not going to do it. I can tell you, I'm not going to do it. At, to go down and build 30 units and pay the town $100,000, it's, that's, I don't know what I'd be willing to pay. But there wouldn't be enough units under your current regulations to even have me do it. So therefore I would have to go to the 830G and then I don't even know, I'm not sure at this point where your fees are going to come into effect. If you'll be able to collect the fees and have an affordable application. That, that's my thoughts and
Super.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, since there's probably no other members of the public, I would move to item four, which is adjourned inside of 18 months to return at 9:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
So move to the second. Actually, I think technically you have to, like, council member.
No, I don't get to do that.
Yes, I will second.
All right. So the motion made by Councilman Murray, also in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Yeah, oh, you can say it. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you all.
And Steve, thank you everybody for participating.